Call to order this. Rick Sashlin for City Bees Grand Forks, Tuesday, August 14th, 2018 is now 5:00. The city clerk, Chief Calerol.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President. Does turn the corner. Just a reminder, due to the primary election taking place, the meeting cannot go past 6:00 per state statute, so just keep in mind that. Go to number one, marketing plan and update and branding discussion. Mr. Gordy.
Hello. Three weeks ago, I brought to you the initial efforts for branding that we were given from AE2S. They are out of town today, and I said I could take care of what we did. EDA asked for one revision last time, and they provided it. It was the live connected, live simple that's in your packet. After reviewing it last week, the EDA said they liked the life connected much better, as you did three weeks ago. And the, there were two questions. One, do we want the outline of the state of Minnesota? Or do you want the whole state of Minnesota shown? And the, strongly felt that the whole state of Minnesota would be better. The other question is, do we want East Grand Forks signified with a star or with a circle? And the vote is half and half. It's split evenly. So, the issue tonight, two issues. One, is life connected? From what you said last time, I believe it is. Is life connected acceptable? And the second is, would you prefer a star or a circle for East Grand Forks?
Well, yes, I'm assuming.
[laughing].
I'd go with the star.
Heads down.
Me personally, I'd go for a star.
Anybody else have any comments on it? Mr. Demers.
I will, just because. I don't have any real strong opinion either way. I like, just to be a little confrontational, I like the circle, because it goes a little bit more with the connection theme, but really, it, it's six of one, half a dozen for me.
I don't get to vote, but I like the star.
I was for the star, too.
Mr. Vetter, Mr. Pachivinsky.
I expressed my preference through an email, and I like the circle. Again, it's, it's not a huge deal. It's, it really isn't, but...
With it, we always have decisions that's hard, right?
Mm-hmm.
Go for the younger generation arrow.
That's not a choice. It's not an option.
You want to render it with that little email send arrow that we're used to seeing?
You know, that went through my mind, too. I also suggested, maybe you put on something like a big news, or, or something like that, but I think we'll restrict it to the circle and the star.
Really? Isn't this a democracy?
How many people, you know, runoff? How many people do you runoff?
It's all good.
You know, there's our advantages. The star is on the terazo, as we enter the building here.
There you go, like the lone star state.
But the circle is the circle of life. And we're talking about life connected. You know, both have merit. And I don't think that anybody is bothered by if the other one is chosen. It's not one of those things that's a, I have to have it my way, or it's, or it's not going to work. I've heard slightly more stars than circles, so...
Could there be an incorporation similar to the star, but more like the star in our seal, or something? Or, I don't know. I don't, if there was more of a stylized star or something. Not that, or I meant, isn't there, isn't there something?
One downstairs, level 4.
Yeah.
Or sugar beet.
Again, I, I don't want to waste a bunch of time on that. What I'll do is I'll take a picture of the one that's down in the terazo.
I don't remember what it looked like. I thought it was a little more stylized, but it could be.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number two, consideration of bear land purchase agreement for personal 83.00116.00. Mr. Golstead.
Thank you. I provided an email regarding just some background on this. I had prepared a bear land purchase agreement based upon the negotiations that Mr. Gordy had with Sacred Heart, provided it to Sacred Heart. Mr. Nick Stromstedt, who happens to be in the, the room, is the attorney for Sacred Heart. He made some modifications regarding his request. My advice would be to leave it as is. The reason for that is that one of the, the requests is standard that we typically have in there is that if they're going to put concrete over our easements, and there needs to be a relocation of the utility, the cost goes to repair the, the concrete or asphalt too. It would be Sacred Heart in this, in this case. We just did the same type of an agreement with Mr. Buckleoo. That was a part of the, the agreement for Mr. Buckleoo, as well as any others. The other issue was regarding, we actually had indicated that we were selling this as is. We were approached by Sacred Heart to use it as a parking lot. Nobody has any objections to doing that. However, we are unsure of what's in or under or around that parcel, okay? So, it's been suggested that we remain liable for any potential hazardous waste that would be uncovered if they start digging and, and to, to install a parking lot. That could end up making the city responsible and liable for a lot more money than the $6,000 that we're ending up going to receive for payment of that. We never had any indication or reason to, to disrupt that, that land over there. It was my suggestion that they be, have a phase one, do a couple sore, boring samples over there if they want to purchase that property at their expense, to decide whether or not they want to go through with that transaction. Because if it's not disturbed, we don't have to fix it, you know, until later date. The other thing was, was basically just, for whatever reason, when they said that they were going to put in a parking lot, it said dirt, asphalt, or concrete. Dirt isn't allowed in the city of East Grand Forks for, for, so that was something that David Murphy brought up. But, other than that, nobody has a problem, that I understand, with selling the property. It's just, it was always understood that it was going to be as is. And if they, meaning Sacred Heart, has a, wants to assure themselves that they're not buying some property that's got some railroad or whatever waste underneath it, because it's the close proximity, they should go through and, and have a phase one done for a couple of bore samples and make the decision on their own. Otherwise, we could really open up a can of worms and be responsible for a significant bill without realizing it. So, that's my advice. Now, this, well, we'll let Nick, we'll let Nick take over here.
Thank you, council members. Like Mr. Gol said, mentioned, my name is Nick Stromstedt. I'm with the Neil Law Firm. I represent Sacred Heart on this matter. I'm here mostly tonight, just as a courtesy, to answer any questions you guys would have for me. Related to the changes I requested, the, I, the way I see it, I think I requested four changes. The first one was just an indication that any surveying that would be required for purposes of replating, Sacred Heart will arrange for that upon approval of the purchase agreement, which I can't imagine the city would have any issue with, but I just wanted to make it clear that they would hire the surveyor to do that, because I think they have somebody lined up who can do it for them at a cost that they want to, that they're willing to incur. As far as the concrete asphalt parking lot, as you know, they're working on a big expansion. They wanted this for, to be able to use during that to store equipment and things like that during the construction. After that, I think they're hoping to use it as a parking lot for, as the school grows. I, my understanding is they do want to eventually put asphalt or concrete in there. I don't know that they have immediate plans for that, but that's what they would like to do. Related to the environmental aspect of it, I think everybody wants to keep the cost down on this as much as possible. It's my understanding under, under the law that the city would actually retain responsibility for any hazardous substances. I can't put my finger on a statute on that, but that's always been my understanding, that the seller retains it anyways. It was just to make clear in the purchase agreement that that would be the case. Finally, that paragraph G, right at the end, just no merger, that would just be a paragraph that none of these provisions would merge with the deed, so the city would retain, or would continue to cooperate with Sacred Heart with what they need to develop that parking lot was the main reason there. So, if there's any questions that the council has, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Any other questions at this time? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, if there's an easement for water lines that are under there, if there's a reason to replace those, the pavement removal would be, within that easement would be at the cost of Sacred Heart. But say you get down there and there's asbestos abatement needed, or something like that, and you need to go beyond that, would that portion be, how would that, would that portion be on Water Night, or whoever, to pay for anything outside of the?
Yeah, the relocation, the relocation of, like, say, a water, water main, that would be the responsibility of the city. You know, if we were doing it on our own, but because it's got a hard surface over it, and we have to get in there and repair, replace, the, the, essentially, the, the policy that the city has done in a number of these things is that that repair work for the concrete asphalt, or whatever, would be the responsibility of, of the landowner.
I'm just saying, if, if you got down there and you needed to abate asbestos, or something, which required a bigger area for some reason, you know, would that, that would just fall under regular, like, city property? If, if you had to do that anywhere? If you had to go outside of an easement, city would pay for that repair?
Well, I'm just, my understanding is mainly, it's electric lines that are under there.
Okay.
And so, the water, I don't think would become an issue, but if it...
Isn't there a valve there, somewhere? Is there a valve there for water?
I'm not 100% sure, but if, if...
I think all the water main was removed from that property when the tower was taken down.
Okay.
Our biggest concern was the electrical side. There's a big five-way switch box. The other stuff, we were okay with moving it, but it was going to be at their expense.
Question, the engineer and the attorney. Is Sacred Heart aware? Have they been provided a map as to where the power lines are buried and water lines? Anything else? Are they, are they knowledgeable about that? Now, it's a, it'll, it'll end up, as far as Sacred Heart's concerned, it's a valuable piece of property for them, because you get 22 parking places. But, they should be aware of whatever underneath there. If, if it's been in there a terrific length of time or not, or, or if it's more recent times. But, we should put the deal together, so it'll be good for many, many years. It'll be good until everybody here is in heaven. You know, I mean, that's, that's what you want to do, like, this. Is, 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 have you ever given them a map or anything?
You know, Jeff and I went over there, and we're, we're pretty sure what's underneath there, as far as the electrical goes and the water goes. And so, I guess I wouldn't be...
Now, very often, Ron, a deed would take and say, reserving however easements and so forth. You're not using that terminology. Is that got to be an antique terminology?
Well, actually, I haven't drafted a deed at this point in time, and, and we are actually having the parcel, a simple subdivision of it, so that it's added to the other land that Sacred Heart owns. And part of that reasoning is, is that for side yard setbacks, so you know exactly where everything is, so when you have to go in there and put a piece of, you know, build a structure, you know where your setback is, is, is located, without having to do a survey every time you do it. That's been our, that's been our recommendation. We did that also, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but with Mr. Buckleoo, that we had it replatted with a simple subdivision. They're taking on that role. So, when we transfer it over to them, we'll be reserving our easement. But there isn't an easement right now that's on that property, other than it was city property. So, we have to locate that easement, so that it's going to be included in the, the description. I don't know if Sacred Heart has been provided that information. I know I didn't. This started out being a really simple transaction. $6,000, it's yours, as is. It's turned into something much, all of a sudden, more than that, so that's where we are right now.
Just a couple of thoughts, if, is that okay? First of all, as you take possession of the property and want to park trucks or vehicles on there during a construction phase, I don't think anybody's going to have a word to say about that. If we want to some way go on record to make provision for that in an interim construction period, without a hard surface, to be able to store trucks, or very, even building materials and whatnot, it's a reasonable place to, to store that and to keep that as ready for the, for the project. As to the question of us taking responsibility for any unknown contamination under there, if, if our city attorney is saying that would be better not included in there, I guess I'd argue to leave it out. And to the other points that you made about you would do the survey, that's great. If they're, the last point that you made, if, if Mr. Golstead is, is on board with that, that would be just fine. But I would think somewhere along the way, if there is contamination, it would predate our ownership of it, and we would want to be able to work up and down appropriately to whoever may have been responsible for that. So, I wouldn't say we should say, yeah, that's on us.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I think it should move down for regular session if everybody is satisfied with what's been presented.
Does anybody have any more comments, or questions for Nick? Or Nick, do you have anything else?
Nope, that would be it. I guess one other thing I'd quick say is, related to Mr. Tweetin, your comment, Sacred Heart did do, like, a gopher call to have them come out and see where the, the actual lines and pipes may be located. They did do that, so, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, consideration repairing Civic Center road. Mr. Stow, Mr. Hutten.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the road on the east side of the, on the east side of the Civic Center is in pretty bad need of repair. There's a few areas where there's, there's some large potholes, and...
Were you going to say there's a few areas where there's asphalt left?
But...
Sinkhole.
Yeah. There's a few areas that are, that are pretty rough, but it's worth proposing and I'd are asking for approval to go ahead and, and put a leveling course in and then overlay the area. My understanding is the road underneath, the base was lime, lime rock that was put down there, along with the parking lot. So, that's a pretty solid base typically. It's just that there hasn't been any treatment under the road for years, so the oil has just dried out, and it's just kind of degraded along there. So, you know, it's not the perfect fix, but in order to reconstruct, it would take a lot of dollars, and, and I think for this time, you know, Reed has a hockey tournament that's coming up this winter, wants to get stuff fixed up, and I think this is the most cost-effective way to do it. So, we've overlaid some other areas that were pretty terrible subgrade-wise, and for shorter patches, maybe, but they seem to be holding up fairly well, so I have no reason to think that this one maybe wouldn't either.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Demers?
Thank you. You've mentioned the, the lime base. Is, do you know when that went in?
I don't know what year it was. Do you know, Steve? It was quite a while back. It was, I talked with Brian Larson a little bit about it, and he was saying that it was prior to him working at the Civic Center, so...
Towards the ways.
Yeah.
I mean, I am concerned about putting it over that base, lime or not. Sometimes, I mean, if that lime is contaminated or what, it's going to get, no matter what it is, you know, so, but, like you said, I've seen places where we pat, we've laid, overlaid, I've been surprised at how well it's held up. So, I guess my preference would be to, to figure out what that base is. You know, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you'd want to core some spots at some point before we do it. I mean, and just so we know, but I guess I'd be fine with a fix like this. I mean, you're probably talking about 10 times this, if you rebuild it. So, I guess if we can get by for a few years with it. But if we had some cores, I mean, that wouldn't cost too much, would it, to come in and core four or five spots along that road, to at least know what we got for base there?
Yeah.
Because I think, I mean, that's a pretty wet area, too. You're probably going to want to rebuild it with some drain tile and, and all that, too, so...
I agree with you, Mr. Demers. I think if you were looking at a little more major reconstruction here, you would, you would want to get cores, so you know what you got beneath there. Again, I think, like Jason said, I mean, he's kind of trying to just buy himself, buy himself a couple of years, you know? You're almost putting, putting a Band-Aid on it right now, so...
I just thought, before you, before you overlaid it, if you did it, then you wouldn't have to come back and core it, you know?
Later on.
Yeah. Like I said, I mean, you'd know, I guess you just have to hang on to the information, but it'd be nice to know what we got. If we're going to do some long-term planning around the bigger parking lots and stuff, too, it'd be nice to know what we got over there. For a couple, I mean, you're talking 1,500 bucks or something, maybe, to a couple thousand.
Are you, are you...
Sorry, go ahead.
Are you going to make the determination of what needs to be fixed before that overlay goes in? Like, what areas? Are they going to determine what are the soft areas that need to be?
They're going to, the plan is just for them to go in and clean out those areas that are, that are worse off, and then they would fill in just with a leveling course at that point. Because most of them aren't really that, they're, they're blown out, but they're not soft. You know, you can drive over them with a truck, and they're fine. It's just that the asphalt has got pounded out of there, in those areas.
Right.
I don't think we have, like, big sinkhole issues. It's more of a pothole, just being hammered out and dried out, so... The plan was just to go in and fill, fill in those with a leveling course, get some sort of a crown going, and then top it off with a three-inch overlay.
It's obvious, as we know, that, that side of that Civic Center is used as a connection road between the...
17th and 15th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just as a, got to make sure that it...
Solid.
Because I'm going to assume it's going to get used a lot as soon as it gets laid down, so...
Mr. Pachivinsky.
Thank you. Just to follow up, this is option one. You've got option two and option three here. Obviously, we're not talking about doing option two and three right now, right?
No, we're just talking about doing option one.
Okay. Because it's the worst of the...
Option, I forget which one it was on there, but the one, one of the other options was to, to take care of the, kind of the up and over portion, and then from the building south to 15th. And that would be a different year if we were going to do that. And then there was kind of two options for the other stretch on the west side of the road, in line with the south side of the Civic Center up to 17th. And there was one, if I remember right, it was like $13,000 to mill an overlay. The other one was a couple thousand to do. That one is one that I would, I guess I would consider, because that stretch of road isn't all busted up. It's actually fairly flat, and there is some integrity left in it. And I think maybe just doing a quick fog seal for a couple thousand would probably be worth it. It might preserve that portion, too.
I guess my comment is, I'm, I'll vote for this, because it's, I think it's, it has to be done, but it is a Band-Aid. It's a Band-Aid on a big wound that needs to be, we've known it's needed to be fixed for a long time. We should start thinking about a final solution and how we're going to pay for it. We've put a lot of money in the Civic Center. It's in excellent condition. It's being well-maintained now, but it doesn't look nice, because the parking lot and the roads surrounding it are, and just, they're, they're just pulverized. So, I mean, I don't, I don't have a solution, but I guess the message to the people that use that facility is, we need to spend a lot of money on it, and we may need some help. Thank you. Sorry.
Anybody else have anything?
Paige.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Move on, number four, requests for annual pump replacement. Mr. Stow.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just our annual pump replacement. I'm bringing it before you. To purchase four different pumps for two different lift stations is just a maintenance ongoing, I guess, ongoing replacement. The pumps that are currently in there, I have it down here to surplus them with no specifics really, because we don't know what we're going to get when they pull them out. I mean, we know to a certain extent that they're worn and stuff like that, but a lot of times, we like to keep one or two around for a spare, or a backup pump, should one of our other ones go down. If they are, if we have a spare for a certain lift station, then we'll typically try to trade, trade a pump in. And in some case, they won't even accept the trade if it's, if it's too bad off, so... So, my recommendation is to purchase four pumps for, from Minnesota Pump Works for $38,733, and declare used pumps as surplus.
Anybody else have any questions for? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number four, request to add senior center business membership slash advertising. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Judy here from the senior center as well, so if anybody has any questions for her that I maybe can't answer on this, feel free to direct them her way. The senior center board of directors, we've been discussing for probably the last three or four months, adding business membership to our programming. Basically, we have just individual or family memberships right now, adding a business one that would add advertising to our monthly newsletter that we send out for a nominal fee. So, there's a program included in here that goes through three levels of three different costs that would be associated with it, and then a sample of a draft letter that we would send to businesses in town, asking for their support. Really, it kind of started as talking about a, how can we continue to raise more funds to improve the center itself, the building, the kind of the general upkeep and the maintenance of it? So, that's kind of the, the extra caveat. The board of directors at the senior center has requested that if this was approved, that somehow we could earmark the funds that are raised through this each year to be in, in, not necessarily in a separate account, I know it all go back to the general fund, be earmarked on a line item, so that if three years down the road, we know that we've made $7,000 through this business membership, and we had a deferred maintenance thing that something broke down in the kitchen, for example, and we needed a cot, needed to get something that was not budgeted, that we'd have a pot of money to go to for that kind of upkeep. That's the, the general idea of it. I think if there's resistance to that on this council, that we would still like to see the business membership added, so that we can at least continue to bring in a little bit more revenue to the center and, and just to boost that, that side of it a little bit. So, any questions for myself or for Judy?
Pachivinsky.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea. I would encourage you to welcome businesses from both sides of the river. There's a lot of businesses in Grand Forks that do business in East Grand Forks and vice versa, so don't limit it, just to east side businesses.
Absolutely.
Then, also, for any in-kind contributions, we found out when we contracted to replace those windows, that the original windows in the Civic Center were donated by a local lumberyard. And so, when we would have a big project like that, we can always look for in-kind donations also.
Anybody else have anything for me? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Consideration memorandum of understanding for acting sergeant, Chief Headland.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next two items are actually, to a large degree, one in the same or closely entwined, anyway. East Grand Forks Police Department, for probably since before I started here, has considered adopting or requesting to adopt a core proposition for a variety of reasons. We haven't ever brought it before, council, before this point in time, but based on a number of discussions with our department, we have decided to bring it forward at this point in time. Essentially, we have our four patrol shifts. There's a sergeant on each of those shifts, and then three to four officers, depending on the time of day. When that sergeant is off, for whatever reason, the senior officer on the shift automatically assumes command on the shift. They make all the final decisions. They also get paid out-of-rank pay, which is the sergeant's pay step that's the lowest, but, above them, but at least 4% more than they currently make. That out-of-rank pay amounts to a various amount in any given year. It all depends on, on how many hours the sergeants are gone. If, you know, in a year where for whatever reason they don't take a lot of vacation, it's not going to be very much. If they're all to max out their vacation and use it all, it could be fairly significant, but it's always going to be in just a matter of thousands. It's not going to be even tens of thousands in most years. Corporal position, if adopted as the way the MOU would read, we would have a promotional process and corporal would then be named for each of those shifts. That corporal then would assume the command on the shift rather than just the senior officer. It would be based on a competitive process rather than just strictly seniority. I think there's a variety of benefits for the department in that it's, seniority is obviously very beneficial. You learn a lot of things from your time with the department and as a police officer, but there are other aspects in decision-making ability, just overall talent as a police officer, and there's a number of things that are more important than just seniority in deciding who should be running that shift when the sergeant's not there. The first MOU, the acting sergeant position, would grant me the authority within, with your approval, to name an acting sergeant in the absence of a sergeant in a given shift rather than it automatically going to the highest, excuse me, the senior officer on the shift. And then the corporal wants, that acting sergeant position or the authority of me to name that position would expire if and when we do approve the corporal position and we go through that promotional process. As I did mention in there, in theory, it would just be four corporals, but there are times within the department that we do have other positions besides the patrol. We have a school resource officer. We have investigators. Currently, all of our investigators are sergeants or lieutenant, but it doesn't have to be. It conceivably could be an officer, it could be a corporal if we had a corporal. So that's why I did include the possibility that a corporal could wind up in one of those positions. Per the current union contract, anyone serving in the position of investigator automatically gets sergeant's pay with the exception if they happen to serve as the drug task force commander, then they are the same pay grade as a lieutenant. So even if they go in as a corporal, that would never affect the budgetary purposes as far as investigator's position. If the SRO, for example, were to become a corporal, that would have a slight impact as well. It'd probably be another roughly $3,000 to $4,000 a year more if that SRO serves as a corporal rather than an officer. So it'd be about 4%, maybe it wouldn't be that much, but 4% above their existing pay grade. So they basically would go up one piquet. The reason I wanted to include that, I don't want to handicap ourselves by either limiting our applicants or potential applicants for somebody moving into a school resource officer position when if we change the position down the road. Or I also don't want to not treat an existing SRO fairly. If they, for example, if we had an SRO like we do right now in a position that we feel is very valuable, we don't want to move him out. But if we just tell him, I'm sorry, you can't compete for this corporal position, in my mind, that's not fair. I'm not saying he's going to get it, but I don't think that's necessarily fair to that officer. And so I guess I just believe he should be allowed to go for the corporal rank regardless of whether he would potentially finish in the top four or not. Any questions? I'm sure there's some things I missed. The corporal, the senior officers already take on some additional duties. They serve as DMT operators. That's the current version in the state of Minnesota of the breath testing device. So the sergeants on each shift are trained in that and then the senior officer is. In this case, for moving forward, we would make sure it was the corporal that had that additional responsibility. They also are trained in portals, which is one of Minnesota's criminal justice information systems. And it's additional responsibility that just they, currently just the senior officer and the sergeant have on each shift. So the corporal would then take on that responsibility as well.
Free Phil.
This will also help for retention of these officers by giving them a slight promotion, isn't that?
I would certainly hope so. I guess you never know, but it does, that's one of the things in a smaller department is limited promotional opportunities. This gives it that little bit of a step, yes. One of the things we've discussed within the department is how do we handle future sergeants' promotions? Do you limit only to the corporals? I don't think we would. I would rather keep it as we currently have it, where as long as you meet the minimum standards, you could still apply. But obviously, just the simple fact that you've served in that corporal role gives you a leg up. But on the same token, currently, if you've served in that senior officer role, it gives you a leg up because you already have the experience of serving as that acting sergeant. This is just, more formalizes it. But within the department, we're obviously all well aware of who has served as the senior officers, or excuse me, as the acting sergeants because of their seniority.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your proposal, chief. I'll try to split this because it is two different things. The first issue, the acting sergeant, I'm fully in favor of. And I don't know if it, I guess if David was here, he might be able to go into it a little bit more deeply. But I almost look at it as that's a management right anyway, so I don't know if it even requires MOU. But, I mean, to me, that's management's right to determine the next person to follow in line. But if it requires an MOU, I guess I'm in favor of it.
If I could respond real quickly, just, I agree with you. I felt it was management right as well, but there was discussion and rather than take the chance of having a grievance, we thought, let's go this route to get an MOU in place and that way all our bases are covered.
Right. And the problem I have with going down the MOU is the MOU that's drawn up gets into the second issue, which I do have a problem with. I don't think that we need to promote people to do what we're asking them to do. I think it almost gets to, we had a case on the city council a few years back where we had a big discussion about who was going to be the second vice president because if the vice president wasn't here, who was going to take on that? At some point, we just have to deal with whatever, you know, the next person has to fill in and whoever, if you dictate who that person is, is that person. I just, to me, it seems like, like you said, I guarantee it would help with retention because it's basically giving people a raise and adding a whole another, it's not another position, but it's another bump up. And sometimes I wish we would do our budget discussion that we're going to have at the end of our meeting, at the top of the meeting, so we can talk about that and then all of a sudden we go down to the list and we're saying, well, yeah, it's $8,000 here, $9,000 here. But then we're going to get to the end and we're going to say, holy cow, we're $500,000 short, you know? And how did we get here? Because we just talked about all these things that we're willing to do. Like I said, I get what you're trying to do. To me, it just seems like it's a bit overly structured and I don't see, to me, and like I said, I don't work day-to-day in the management of the police department, but to me, it seems like it puts the city in a tougher spot. And, because what happens when you don't have a corporal to do? Now you have a patrol officer that's out of rank and has to, you know, so it just doesn't, it just shifts the problem down the line, to me. And at some point, we just have to say, you're the guy, you're acting sergeant. So I don't, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, $8,000 or, I think that's going to be on your low end because in your proposal, you talk about four to six. This is, and you also, in your proposal, you also talk about that it wouldn't necessarily be your highest ranking because that's what you want to kind of get around. So you're probably asking for a bigger jump than just the highest ranking because you're, that $8,000 was based on the highest ranking moving up to 16 from 15, right? Because that's what you said, Terry said, if you move your four highest up, that would be. So if you're actually moving someone that's not your highest up, then you're going to be bigger. But like I said, it's a few thousand dollars here or there, but these are the type of costs that cost the money, that cost incrementally and compound over time. And right now, I don't think that we're in a spot to do that, and that's my opinion. But it'll probably pass and whatever, but I just want to make sure that we're aware that we're adding to the budget.
Absolutely. And on that last note, Terry just used those top four because he had to use some number.
Right.
It gives a ballpark. In reality, any of the promotions, assuming, and again, we haven't, the council at this point in time has not approved the new pay plan. If the new pay plan is approved and officers go to step 15 or grade 15, excuse me, if you're an officer that's at step two or step three or whatever you happen to get this, you still will just go up that one, you'll go up the one grade and you're probably only going to, you probably will go backwards in the steps, but it's only going to be whatever the next step, it's only 4% or more above you. So regardless of where they get moved up from, they're only going to be about 4% more than they're currently.
But they gain a step, too, so they gain seven more percent on the top end.
That's true.
I mean, so I'm just, like I said, it's not a huge amount of money, but all these things add up over time. We're going to talk about another position a little bit.
Absolutely.
And it's, I'm not saying yours, but like, we're just going to talk about all these other positions. And then at the end of the day, when it's 6 o'clock and we got to leave, is it going to be, oh, budget time, time to go? You know, so that's my point. And that's, I certainly understand what you're trying to do and I don't think it's a bad thing. I just don't know if it's worth the cost to the city right now, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor.
I will say that at this point, I do not have my head fully around the question of whether to go to the corporal-type structure. I might 100% support it or I might come to the other side and say it's hard to justify. But I do like the idea of taking it cool, you know, really let everybody get their head around it and weigh the pros and cons of it. Because once you create a position like this, it would be very difficult to do away with it in the future.
True.
So to enact such as this, I'd want everybody to feel like, you know what, I've fleshed it out in my mind. I've heard all the pros and cons, ready to move. And for me, it would take more than a one-week interim from now to, say, the next council meeting. I'd rather let it simmer a little longer than that, particularly for the second part. For the first one, as you say, to give you the latitude, I think that's a good one right out of the chute. And then to the corporal one, I'd want to take maybe a few weeks to let that simmer in my mind.
Council members feel similar? Should we have the first one on?
Me personally, I don't have number six, acting sergeant. I think it's, you know, proper to move that forward. I guess, as the mayor indicated, I think a little more look at it and I guess more impact that would be against the budget would probably be best. My other question is, with this MOU and regarding union, how is that affected and how does that process work with them of, since it's going to be in, you know, our contract? What?
They're having a union meeting tomorrow afternoon and they're, excuse me, Thursday afternoon, and they'll be discussing these topics as well. So obviously, if they vote them down and don't support them, it becomes a moot point. But if they do support them, then it just carries on, I guess.
Is there?
I would just like to look into it, but I do believe, similar to Mr. Demers, that since the, you're calling them the senior ranking officer on the shift, they're all the same level when it comes to position. I think that that's managerial discretion on making out your schedule. For instance, your sergeant takes a vacation. I think you can place as acting sergeant anybody in that shift and not necessarily have to go to the senior ranking officer. I know that that's the way we've done it in the past, but I do believe that's managerial discretion. I always think it's a good idea to discuss it with the collective bargaining unit so that you have an understanding. But I'm not convinced at this point that an MOU is absolutely necessary. I'll try to look at that a little bit tomorrow. But to your point, always talking to the union as well as looking out for it so that you don't end up with a grievance that we don't need to deal with. And then even if we're correct in the grievance, you still had to go through the entire process, so. But I'd like to look at it just briefly tomorrow.
And if any of us, anyone has questions about either of these topics, I'd be more than happy to discuss with the interview at any time, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Number eight, discussion on charter commission, Mr. Gullstead.
I was just asked to put this together, well, not just asked, but I was asked to put this together. I put a petition together, a resolution together. Originally, the statute requires that we have anywhere between seven and 15 individuals that would potentially be on that charter commission. I don't recall, but I thought we were going to have seven and then all of a sudden I have eight names. And so I don't have a problem with eight names, but in looking at some of the other charter commissions around the area and the state, they typically have the mayor as a charter commission member because you could truly have a bunch of citizens from the city of East Grand Forks that are not very well-versed in the city government. So at least you have somebody on that commission to help lead. So what I've done in here is essentially put in the eight names that were recommended. I added the mayor for this purpose. I did alternate the terms from four years to two years. All of them would typically be four years. However, you don't want to have them being potentially replaced all at the same time. So when the two-year term would lapse, then it would automatically then go to a four-year term. So you're having alternating appointments by the chief judge or recommendations by the chief judge. Other than that, seven to 15, there's no magic number. I do know, and Keith brought it up when I was looking at Crookston's, there's also a member from the council that's on their charter commission. I don't know if that's actually a designated spot or if they just actually appoint one person from the council always on the charter commission. But for the last 20 years, it appears that there's always been the mayor as well as a council member on that charter commission. So if there's any questions, what I did was, this is just kind of my draft and what was asked of me. If there's other recommendations from this group, this is an etched in stone.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Gullstead, for putting all the work into this. It's finally coming to fruition. I look at the list and it's marked by a great number of East Grand Forks residents, men and women, including you two, mayor. I think it's a great list. You know, I think Mr. Hecht is great and I think he's doing a great job at the EDA. I'll just mention my slight objection to having someone that's already on another commission. But it pales in comparison to getting this thing done. Like I said, I think Mr. Hecht is, will do great on the board. And it's more about positions rather than the person. Second thing, is the mayor's position an ex-official position that, or is it a named position? So, you know, in 30 years, when the mayor decides he doesn't want to be mayor anymore, does it automatically transfer the next mayor or is it named to mayor?
The way it's been and the way I anticipated, it would be the mayor, okay? So whoever the acting mayor is would be the person that would ultimately be on this commission and then they would be appointed for a four-year term and then roll over if there was a reelection.
So there's no need, when there's a change in mayor, to go back to the judge and add that name?
You would end up just sending a resolution to the judge and asking for an appointment, just like you would in any of these others.
But there's no way to just?
Every four years, you don't get automatically bounced off. You just have to have a reappointment.
Right.
And every time, it needs to go to the chief judge for a recommendation according to statute.
Okay, so you can't just name ex-official mayor, plug that in. Would the mayor have full, like, voting rights and everything on that?
The mayor would have full voting rights in the commission.
Like I said, I, slight objections to the list, but overall, I think this is a great deal and let's get it done and move forward with this commission that is needed. Thank you.
Pachamiski.
Just one quick comment, and that is, I think it's great that the mayor is on there. And my, Mr. Demers kind of answered my question. My comment would have been to have the mayor as a two-year term because his term ends in two years. But if it rolls over to the next mayor, then that's not a big deal. Secondly, I do kind of feel that if the mayor is going to be on here, that the council should have representation also.
And that's up to the council?
Yep.
I don't have a problem with that. I just put this together for your review.
And I don't care who it is. I'm not going to be here after the end of this year, but possibly the council president or vice president may be appropriate since, I mean, that's just, I feel strongly about the separation of powers and that sort of thing. And if the mayor is going to be on a charter commission, I think the council should be represented also. That's, I'm not going to make a big stink about it, but that's my opinion.
Nelson, Mayor?
I was going to speak in favor of having a council member also on there, and then to open the conversation of how would we choose that individual? Would it be a standing position for president or vice president, or by council vote, or by mayor nomination? Any of those would be just fine, but I would love to see also one member of the council on there.
Thoughts from anyone on that? Mike?
You could, you could suggest that, or I could suggest that one of the at-large seats, which represents the whole community and not just a ward, might be something to think about.
So is there a plan that, one is this, does it have to be approved by us, Tom?
Well, what I would ultimately like is, however you do it, we approve it, so then I sent it, I send it over to the court for a request to order the charter commission to be reinstated, and the individuals that you select to be submitted to the judge be approved. And then, once the judge approves that, then we would have you sign the acceptance, whoever they are, acceptance and oath, and then you would have your meeting of the charter commission and a move forward in a fashion to examine and review the charter with the direction also of the council, you know, that can make recommendations on what they want to see as modifications, if any.
Just one quick follow-up, and then I'll, that'll be all. With our other commissions, it's an appointment that's made by the council president and then approved by the council, I would suggest that that would be the same process that we should use.
That would have to be, let's say, we approve this next month or next week, are we looking at getting this approved next week?
It can, I'm on your timeline.
That's right. Do we want to bring this back to another work session and discuss it, or do you want to move forward to next week and approve it? I know we've been waiting to do this, that's why I'm asking.
Let's move it on and just make the amendment that says the nine members of which one mayor, one member shall be the mayor of the city and one shall be a city.
Would you, so do you want to have 10?
Yeah, I would go to 10 in that case.
And I don't mind 10, I mean, this, it would require anything to pass to be a six-to-four vote, and I think for something like this, that should, that should be a good standard. I mean, I don't, I'm not afraid of having an even number on something like this.
So however you want to do it, I'm just asking so that I can draft it.
Just so I get two votes.
Well, good question, does he have, he's not the mayor of this commission, so he can't veto something, right? Just when it comes back to that.
My next question, for not to beat this thing, but you're naming Stephen Gander as mayor, do you have to have a name on there for the council person?
Well, what I need to do is I need to provide the name to the judge.
That's why, so they're asking.
So I need a name, and then...
Plus you have to find another position.
Right.
You're going to go to 10, you're going to have to find another.
Be the council person.
That's true.
Because right now, with Mayor Gander, it's nine, if you add a council person, it'll be 10, and then I would just submit it, it can go anywhere from seven to 15. There's no magic number.
No pressure, Mr. Olson.
Yeah.
And the council one would always be two years, because we switch up in that, our commission memberships every two years, pretty much, anyway, so, it could be always two years for a term.
Well, I'd have to just kind of revise it, because I think the statute provides that they're four-year terms.
Yeah.
Can we appoint one tonight?
Well, you could make a recommendation tonight, and I could put it in there, and then you could turn around and vote on it next week.
Want to make a recommendation?
Megan would just have to make sure they're a resident and they're a valid voting member. No.
You verify that. Go to one of the polling places and put your license on the iPad.
I have access to the paper for this.
Want to make a recommendation tonight?
I'll recommend Mr. Olson. Think we can get along?
Is it done?
Anything else on this? Just change that wording up and change the, it's only two years. Nothing else? Sounds good. Move on to discussion on 2019 budget.
Good, I have two minutes. Okay, so just to let you know, I did send around an updated because Wada and I worked together and got better numbers on our franchise free tax, so instead of being down 60-something, it's 48. So we just wanted to give this to you, the mayor added some things in there just for food for thought, so please look at those, read through those, and then at our meeting next, at our budget meeting on the 21st, they will be packaged together like we had last year. So, if you have any questions, I don't know if we have time to answer them, but quick ones, it'd be great.
I think from what came with it, you're showing some automatic increases in payroll, right?
Yes.
That are already contractually agreed to.
Correct. There could be some fluctuation where the insurance might not be at that high a level, so, and then the only other thing is, is that park administrative system is in that total, the 505 total.
Mr. Tweedler?
I have a question. On street reconstruction down near the bottom, you had four years that you were, or three, four years that you, three years you basically were 250, and you've increased it to 750. And I suggest that we increase the amount of 750 to 50,000. The reason I say that is this...
Can we keep that for next Tuesday, please? Just because we're on a time schedule, I don't want us to run over, so.
It has to be done by 6 o'clock today. It has to be done by 6 o'clock today.
I can throw, I can, I'll gladly throw that in, and then you can make a decision from there, but I'll add that. I can add that in, okay?
Anybody else have anything? Good adjourn. Move to adjourn by Pachamansky, second, taken by Reepel, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.
They didn't read, you guys got a couple minutes.